Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, October the 29th, 2024. Again, this is a hybrid public meeting. Some members of the public are welcome to participate in person or remotely. To join online via video, use the Zoom meeting link in the meeting agenda or the Zoom meeting ID 638-929-1060. There's also a dial number available for those wishing to join by phone. Meeting will also be available after, for viewing, on Norton Cable Access and Norton Media Center's YouTube page. For future sessions, please feel free to email questions for the board ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael, town staff, whose contact information is listed on the meeting agenda. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order here. And just for a matter of record, member Jim Arts is not able to attend this evening. So but the rest of our members are all here in person. And at Town Council's recommendation, our last session, I'll just ask everybody to go down the line and state their names. I'm Tim Griffin.
Rob Welsh.
Steve Wolchow.
Eric Norris.
Laura Parker.
Alan Bullock.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. So I'll skip over Planning Board business and policies for now. Then we'll dive into that a little bit in our discussion point at the end. In terms of bills and warrants, if anybody would like to look at the one bill that we have for this meeting, please feel free. It is the Verizon bill for the town planner. Correct.
You should be making more calls today.
Okay. And
That's low.
And I don't think we have any minutes to approve at this meeting.
But more coming.
Yeah. So we can move on from that at this point. The first item on our agenda is A&R endorsement, A&R-7 for Zero Crane Street. The applicant is Bernard Parati, owner of Long Built Homes. This is a area that we've looked at for previous decisions. Paul, did you want us to give an overview or did you want the applicant to give an overview?
I can give a quick overview, but Lee Castanetti is here. He's the, he's with Long Built Homes. But you've actually seen this A&R back a couple of years ago. And then Mr. Castanetti had come in for a couple of special permits for an earth removal and a common driveway. This one, he is making some modifications to the boundaries, one of which was after the approval of the special permits, and a butter notified us that her septic system was actually on his property. And he was kind enough to make this modification to draw, and that's parcel E-E1, to redraw the property line, so her septic system is now on her property. And then over on parcel A-A1 and A2, the highway superintendent Jared Ferrera has been interested in realigning Pine Street there for safety reasons. They haven't, he hasn't received the funding yet to even do the engineering study or never mind the construction. But he had coordinated Mr. Castanetti about reserving that. And so he, Mr. Castanetti is proposing at least identifying on the plan that this, this would be an area that could be, in the future, provided to the town, should we realign the road.
And that's A2 in the top left corner there?
Yes.
Okay.
I see A1, where's A2?
Up here in the top.
Oh, up here. Oh.
It's a sliver of one.
Yeah, I got it now. Yeah. I was even looking at that as the line.
So Mr. Castanetti, is there anything else you wanted to add? Or you think that covers it?
Pretty much covers it. We, some of the lot lines for all of the lots have been tweaked a bit just so that when the town takes that parcel, every lot, Lot A would have been under 80,000 square feet. So we realigned some of the lots so that even after the taking, all of the lots will be zoning conforming. You can't lose conformity by a taking, but it's a lot easier if somebody's selling the lot and they don't have to go through a whole rigmarole of explaining why it's not zoning conforming and whatever else. So we just thought it was best to keep them all zoning conforming after the taking. So that, so that resulted in some, some of the lots being a little bit readjusted. Nothing significant, but just enough to get them all zoning conforming with the appropriate furniture.
We gotta keep the zoning board busy. Okay. Any initial questions on this A&R?
To clarify, the only two changes then is to give the ladies a little bit of land for the septic system and the sliver.
And the creek, that sliver, so that the town can ultimately take that as, as a part of the layout of Pine Street.
Because he
To align Pine Street in that area.
They're gonna bend the border a little bit to make sure that lot stays conforming. Same way here, when they cut in a little bit, I think they twisted the borders a little bit to add the square footage.
Fair enough.
Yeah. So there are other changes beyond those two, but just the adjustments to
Lot lines, yeah.
So if we have questions?
No.
Okay.
Anything we can do to fix the problem this week?
So I'd be looking for a motion to endorse the A&R.
Motion to endorse?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Steve and a second from Rob. Is there any further discussion on the motion to endorse? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay. And we've got the, the big Mylars and the pink and coffee there.
There's the Mylar and the coffee.
Do we sign now or will they sign later after the meeting?
They need to be recorded, the clerk anyway, right? So we can sign, we can sign at the end of the meeting and then you can let me know when it's ready, if that works.
Okay.
Let's do this with you, too. That's the
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll have to check for it. See, buying lots right there.
The application.
Sure.
It's the surety you want.
Listen, he has to buy the lot before he can give us the land.
No. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We all voted in your favor, we should have been.
No.
That's a bad joke.
Okay. Continuing on, we do have a continuation of, just for everybody joining the call, in case you didn't see the updated version of the agenda. We have three public hearings posted on the, the initial agenda, but two of them for 222 Mansfield Avenue and 257 Mansfield Avenue. Both of them, we are going to, we are looking to continue to our next session because of an issue with the noticing requirements. So we don't need to take those motions out of order now, but just in case anybody was on the call waiting for us to get to them, wanted to make sure that we said that. So the next item here is a remand for a special permit, SP-1, and site plan 20881 for 237 East Main Street. This is an application for a special permit and site plan approval for a 27,000 square, an 80 square foot warehouse. This was remanded to the planning board by Massachusetts Land Court, 24 MISC 000076, with the owner-applicant Conde Capital Partners. And this goes to continue twice. So last week, we heard an update from the applicant as well as some other parties. We made the decision to continue to review a draft decision and make any other comments or hear any other feedback that we wanted to hear. With that, I'll stop and say, is there anything from the applicant's perspective you wanted to add to that discussion or do you think that that covers it?
Any brand new car with the pre? I was just gonna, we're here, we did our presentation last time. I know there was some feedback, but we're here with any questions. I can share the plans if anybody has any questions. We reviewed the decision recall and we don't have any concerns with any of the conditions, I believe, we're all set. So we're here if this question is otherwise.
Okay. Thank you. Paul, anything you wanted to add in terms of?
So just that the initial draft I had worked on, the town council reviewed it, made changes, which I originally, originally shared with you, but also with the applicant. They made some changes. Town council and I reviewed it and we don't have any issues with it. So if you'd like, that could, we could work off of, as we, when the time comes, we can work off of that draft.
Sure.
And I'll have that up on Zoom as well.
Okay. Obviously, we'll go in, we'll look at the decision again as this discussion continues. Any questions from members of the board about specific conditions, specific pieces of the draft that we wanted to run through at this point?
Can I go? One, one question real quick. The bus, a, a bus space, is that still being added there or available?
The, the proposed bus stop, which is right on the right, is there between, that's between the two driveways. So that's space will be reserved for that in the future if GATRA ever wants to go up there for a service.
Okay. And we do have town council on the, on the Zoom call here. Ms. Dye, is there anything else that you wanted to add in terms of procedure or anything else? I know obviously you've been working with Paul the past couple of weeks on this.
No, I might just forget my prior comment that I recommend you make, you know, detailed findings in support of your decision to incorporate it. And I wanted to just confirm how many voting members you have. I know you said Jim isn't here this evening. So do you have six eligible to vote?
We do have six eligible to vote. I believe Ms. Parker did fill in her Mullen form already, so.
Correct.
I just wanted to confirm that for the applicants.
Yes. No.
Thank you. I'm here if you have any questions, but I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you. Additional questions from the board? Otherwise, I would go to public comment. I know we, we had one residence submit some materials and they spoke at our last session. There's no, nothing further. It asks if they wanted to say anything further or anybody else? I'm seeing nods.
Having reviewed, sorry. Having reviewed the comments that we received from a member of the public and just having watched the last meeting, I'm trying to pull up the, Brian, do you have the rendering that we got? I can't seem to locate it in OpenGov.
The rendering of the proposed?
Yeah. What it looked like, what I was a little bit, what I wanted to bring to the board's attention was the rendering that we got based upon one of the exhibits from a member of the public of a like building. And actually, if you don't mind, I'll share first. That'll probably be easier from here.
Let us know if the screen sharing doesn't work for you. Yeah, I see it.
Okay. Oh, Jesus, I did have this. All right. I'll try and share from here. So I know we had, the board at the last meeting had talked about, as long as it looks like the rendering, everybody is satisfied with that. So I just wanted to draw attention to one of the exhibits that Orrin had sent in. So this is the Al Nylon Building. This is, by his estimation, 72 feet from the road. And this is a building of pretty much approximately the same height as what is being proposed here. And I just want to make sure that the board is comfortable. I'll have Brian show the rendering. There does seem to be a bit of a discrepancy between what the rendering looks like and what this building is going to look like from the road. So this is 72 feet away. This is what the building is going to look like from the road. And I'm gonna stop sharing if Brian can pull up. Do you have the rendering?
I do.
Okay.
I think you stopped looking once you started sharing and then
Okay. So I'm concerned about saying it needs to look like the rendering. And then when it doesn't, what happens? Because the rendering does appear to show a building that seems to be distinctly further set back from the road.
Okay. So
So 72 feet is the closest point to the street. It's the point of the building that's closest to Leonard.
So, and we can, once we see it on screen, you can make that comment. But your, your, your general point there is that the rendering makes the building appear further away from the roadway than it may be on the actual layout plan.
Yes.
So the rendering was kind of dropped into a green field, not necessarily cut off where the street is.
I'm assuming they used their, their best efforts to make it look 72 feet away from that point, but it, it does look markedly different.
It feels like it's further.
It does.
It's closer or further from
Further.
From your perspective, okay.
And I just wanted to make sure the board saw that because going, you know, if we say it needs to look like the rendering and they start building it and it doesn't, what happens then?
Yeah. So
And maybe we need to be more specific.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would view it, if you'd like to share, please.
So there's just the, there's two renderings. And I'll kind of, and they are based on the site plan. The architect brings our site plan in. So there's, there's two renderings. So this one here, this is a view from Leonard Street, I mean, from East Main, I mean, from 123, sorry. And it's pretty much, I guess the viewing point would be right, kind of where the, right past where the right intern is, looking at this angle, because you can see both sides. So you're probably looking from a distance of, you know, 80-ish feet, because I think it looks like they're right on the sidewalk there. But it's, it's not the closest point because it's not, you know, tangentially right to, they angled it around so you could see both sides of the building. The other rendering here, obviously, the building's off more in the distance. The parking is front. This is from the corner of Leonard Street. So this is, this is further than 72 feet. This is more in the 200-foot range, because that's from, you know, this corner here. And that, that view was to give the parking in front and the setback kind of from both streets. So I think it's, it's important to distinguish, you know, obviously, comparing this rendering to a picture of a building 72 feet away, it's not gonna be apples to apples. It's more comparing it to this one, which is, you know, if you were standing kind of where this tree was, you're probably 70, closer to 72 feet and you're down the street a little bit, so it's probably a little bit of a distance. But I think this is from the closest street. This is kind of more representative of what the building is gonna look like. The other one's from Leonard.
And I do believe the Al Nylon Building is 50 feet tall at the front face, because there's three stories. This building is only 40 feet tall. It's 10 feet less than what Al Nylon is showing in Norton Commerce Center.
Okay.
Yeah. But in any case, we're not putting up a single level building.
No.
We're aware that we're putting up a 40-foot tall structure right there. So it's, yeah. You know, it's a good, it's a good check on our perspective in terms of what we see and the perspective, the point, the right, definitely. Laura, thank you.
Tim, can I just clarify something for the board as well on this issue? This is Robyn Stein, AP Law.
Please.
If you look in the draft decision at standard condition of approval four, it recites that the project shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the plan set and title, site plan reviewed and notice of intent submission. Do you see that condition? Which is our business part. Date of September 8th, revised December 26th. That's what the decision says about the construction. I just want to confirm, are the renderings in that plan set and have not been specifically referenced to a rendering to be added as well?
Understood. Thank you. We can, and we can confirm the, the reference. If it is, if it needs to be adjusted or not.
The renderings are in our plan set, so we probably referenced the slideshow that we presented.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can add the file. And from a, Laura, to your other point, kind of what happens if it doesn't? That would be a building commissioner enforcement action, correct? Paul?
Sorry?
If the, if they wanted to change it, they can come back to the board for a modification.
Correct.
If they want, if they, if we woke up one morning and it wasn't what we approved, then it would be a, a building commissioner enforcement action.
Right.
After the applicant would do that, but from a hypothetical.
Correct. Correct. And any change that they were proposing before, again, they have to come back before the board.
Just curious, what would the building commissioner tell them to? I mean, this time they've built the buildings.
Build it to what was approved here?
They tell them, take down some of what they did and put it up the way that was approved?
That could happen.
Okay. Not bad enough, I just, this is a question.
Because the building commissioner has to enforce what you approve. And if, if he'll be looking at the plan sets that are approved. And if we put in a, make sure the condition includes the renderings, then.
Yep. And the town has the teeth to do that. Yep.
And the elevations are all in there as well. In the plan set.
Yeah. Any further questions or comments from the board's perspective? Otherwise, I'd open up to public comment. Okay. So if there's anybody in the Zoom meeting who'd like to speak, I ask that you use the reactions function in the Zoom meeting and quote unquote, raise your virtual hand. And I'll know that you're looking to speak and that you're not just watching because of our entertaining television. Otherwise, I'll go to members who are here in person, members of the public. Mr. Ziegler, would you like to come up and speak to the podium?
I'm not sure what plans you're now looking at. Just for the board's identification, what I did was take a screenshot of what was on the, the last meeting, as when you spoke about it. That's the only thing I had. I took a screenshot of that. I'm not sure if there's a different plan that I haven't seen that shows it being closer. Is that something that you're looking at? I, I, what you were
I don't, no. The plans, there's been no change to the plans since the last
The rendering that they showed on screen was the same one that you had a screenshot of.
Okay. And that, that is further than the, the, the other thing I wanted to, in doing this, I looked closer at the revised plan that you submitted and it showed a building height of 35 feet. I was referencing 40 in my, in my, in my letter. And I just want to be, in fairness to you, I'm not sure. Is it 35 feet or 40 feet? In the, the latest site plan you submitted, it shows 40 feet a setback and you reduced, did you reduce the building to 35 feet?
Yeah, we dropped it by 50.
It's 35.
It is 35.
I'll just ask you to direct comments to the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, I, I don't think that you're gonna get into a cross-examination with the applicant, but I will.
No.
Set good habits.
I, I just want to apologize if that's the case, because I didn't sit at the first instance. And I don't know if your plans or your, your decision is referencing the 40 or the 35. But even at that point, my, my argument is still basically that it's, it's still 10 foot higher than what it was before and it's 40 feet closer than it was before as a retail, one, one-level site. One, one last thing that I'd like to say is, basically, you, I highlighted the objectives of, of siding and, and the site plan and the special permit that's in the bylaws. And the question that I raised is, if it's not applied to this, you have an industrial, a newly permitted, a newly zoned industrial site across the street. So basically, they have a height restriction of up to 50 feet and a setback of 40 feet. At what point, if you don't deny it now, based on criteria, are you gonna be able to deny it anywhere else in the town when they, when they max up their criteria and go into the site plan? And I'd suggest, with very few exceptions, including the, maybe the Village, Village Central, where we encourage people to go to the site line. Very few, if any, bigger properties are anywhere close to that. And the question I have is if you allow it here, will you be able to deny it somewhere else? And if you deny it, what criteria are you gonna use to be able to deny somebody else doing the same thing in terms of building something high as close to its, its site plan as it can be? And basically, if, if you looked at the material I provided, at least from what I, I was able to see, it's nowhere, it's not indicative of the rest of the sightings throughout the town of comparable properties. Thank you.
Sure. Orrin, I think
When you're talking about building elsewhere, you just mean some totally different place in town, like not just down the street there at Leonard.
Right, right across the street.
Yeah.
The industrial park across the street.
But you said what, what if somebody
Well, you have, you have commercial property all, all along that property as well, all along East Main Street, as well as one site that's actually industrial along East Main Street. And I'm suggesting that if somebody else comes to you other than within the Village Central, which we want to encourage, what's your criteria for saying no? Are you gonna be looking at this and you're basically saying, well, we let them do it. How are you gonna tell them they can't do it?
Well, in a complete, we're talking a completely different location, right? He's talking in comparison to other buildings that are
On Main Street, on Main Thoroughfare, which is the criteria you're supposed to be using.
Future hypothetical, which is
Yes.
No, I understand that. I just try to make sure I understand it.
But the, the question becomes, once you say you can do this, how, what's the criteria for someone not, not being able to do it in the future? And that's very different from the rest of the town.
I, I would say there's a lesson to be learned here about as-of-right uses and the zoning of the industrial park. Warehouses are allowed as-of-right. That is hindering any of our ability to just say no to a project. They are allowed to build a warehouse, 10,000 square feet. They're allowed a multitude of other industrial uses. Further down the road, there is another commercial area on the Eastern Line. They have some pretty big warehouses. And on the Adarota Line, there are some rather large warehouse buildings over there. This isn't completely out of line for what's on 1, 123, although I do agree, I wish it was a beautiful, ornate building. I, I would prefer that. But the town chose to zone this land as industrial and they're allowed to do certain things there. Maybe that is the reflection that we need to think about zoning in the future or changing how much we allow in an industrial zone as, as-of-right. That is how I would tend to it going forward. When another project comes up, it might be in a commercial zone or a village commercial where we have special permit privilege. We can choose to just outright deny a project if they don't cooperate. So that, there are other standards that can apply depending on where else a project goes. But this specifically, the town chose to make an industrial zone and they are matching their other buildings there and other industrial areas in town. And they've kind of beautified it as much as a warehouse can be.
Just, there's two things. One, there's a new, this is a new ripple that, that's come into, into our town and that's the institution of sidewalks. So before, we had all, all the properties we're looking at, and I gave you a list of them down on East Main Street. Again, it's East Main Street, not throughout the town. I mean, I gave you an example of their own in, in their industrial park, one of the buildings I used, just because I wanted to get access to a building to give you some site view of it from my own sense. And that building is literally on, on their, on their setback. But that's an industrial park. I would expect it to be there. We're talking about a thoroughfare for our town and the standards we want to set for that thoroughfare. And all I'm saying is by, by letting them go closer than anything we have right now that I have found that's comparable, that much closer, I'm saying, as a board, what criteria do you use from denying other people to do the same thing? And does that comply with the objectives that are required? I'm not saying you can deny them having an industrial park or having a, a warehouse. I'm just saying you can, you can make them push it back further. I mean, they have other, they have other criteria. They could put a flex building up. They could do other things. That's there. I mean, it's your duty as, as, as a board, as a town board, to represent the town, its interests and its property. Although I encourage, and I think this board has always tried to cooperate with builders, it's not your job to cover them for mistakes or cover their market when it's there. It's not such a job. Your job is to focus on what your objectives are under the bylaws. And all I'm saying is, those bylaws give you the right to say, this is not done. We want to basically create something that's consistent with, with the thoroughfare for the, for the purpose of preservation of value within that town. The other thing was the introduction of sidewalks. We now have sidewalks, and we're introducing that throughout the town to make the town more walkable and livable. And so now, the criteria is not the drive-by, where you have to look from the street. The criteria is now even getting closer. And that closeness in this site was something like, in one point, it was 16 feet, in another it was 22 and a half feet closer. So you're looking, instead of 70 feet, you're looking at 50 feet. Or, so you're even getting closer because of what the town is looking to do. So I'm, I'm just saying, you, I'm not saying you have to do it, I'm saying you have the right to introduce that concept in having to evaluate how they build their warehouse, not whether they can do it or not, and where it goes.
True. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Segal. Any further questions, comments from members of the board here for the applicant? For Paul, in terms of the process here? Anybody on the Zoom meeting? I'll just keep rambling for 15 seconds in case anybody wants to find the mute button, just to play in. Okay. So our actions here, if we don't have any further questions, I think the applicant's presented all that they feel like they may need to. I'm sure if they have anything else to say, they'll pop up and let us know. Otherwise, our next action would be to decide if we want to close the public hearing and/or move forward with a vote. So I will go to the applicant, just in terms of if they're comfortable with us closing the public hearing at this time, or whether they'd prefer us wait for a future session.
Close the public hearing, your request.
Okay. Any further questions, comments?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second, okay. Have a motion to close the public hearing, a second, from Eric and Steve. Any further discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Again, this means that we will not accept any further testimony from the applicant, from Butters, from anybody else. Okay? Well, if they're closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Okay. Opposed, extensions? Okay, that's 6-0. So we've closed the public hearing. Does everybody feel comfortable moving forward with a vote on the draft decision? Or would we like to wait and do that at a next, at our next session? Since we do have one member missing this evening, that's a choice.
I'm okay to go forward, if you have the rest of the vote.
I'm comfortable. Good to go.
I am at the mercy of whatever motions come up, so.
Are you looking for three separate motions on the special permits? Would be three separate motions, or how do you want to do it?
Paul, can we confirm just the specific actions here?
So, so, yes, Alan, you're correct. So it's a special permit, there's two special permit votes. One for the building being over 10,000 square feet or 25 parking spaces. The next is for, because it's within the Water Resource Protection District, and they're proposing more than 15% impervious cover, or 2,500 square feet. Next is the site plan, because it's over 2,500 square feet and 10 parking spaces. And then we have our typical waivers for off, while there is one about off-street parking and loading on the driveway width, and then the plant scale, the usual one.
The plant scale waiver that never goes away, yes. Okay, so that's, so that's two special permits and a site plan, correct? With those waivers?
Yes.
Okay.
So who's the first one in here?
I would say the building size.
Yeah, building over 10,000 square feet and 25 parking spaces.
I'll make a motion for that.
You have a motion to, for the special permit for the size of the building and number of parking spaces? Wait a second, second from Steve. So we have a first motion from Rob, second from Steve. For this vote, I will go down and just do a roll here, just so we have everybody individually. Rob?
Aye.
Steve?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That is 5, 5, 1, 0. And the next special permit would be for the Water Resource Protection District, Paul?
Correct.
Okay.
Take that motion.
Okay. The motion from Rob, and it's second, second from Steve again.
Just let this go.
Okay. And I'll go through the roll one more time here, actually, no, that'll be one other time. But Rob?
Yes.
Steve?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that's the special permit for the Water Resource Protection District who has not approved? Okay.
So we will need to go back and identify the reasons why?
Yes. Okay. Then we should proceed with the site plan?
I'll make a motion for that. Seconded?
Okay, and the site plan would contain the waiver for the map scale, correct?
Correct.
And the other waiver was for, apologize?
Driveway width.
Driveway width.
I'll get there, I'm just trying to record these correctly.
Sure.
Sorry? Okay, sorry about that.
Okay.
So the site plan, because it's over 2,500.
Okay. So, site plan with the two waivers for driveway width and?
The map scale.
Map scale. So Rob, with that, work for your motion with those waivers? Okay?
Seconded.
Seconded, okay. Rob?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. I believe that concludes the action that we need to take in relation to this application. Paul, we can reset on any next steps that are needed in our next session.
Sorry, Tim, it was a little hard to hear out in Zoom line. Did you take action on the waiver requests?
Yes, we did. They were incorporated into the special, in the site plan.
Oh, you did the waivers with the site plan?
Correct. Since they both relate.
Can you just run me through that vote again? Because I, I must have broken off, because I did not catch that.
Sure. So.
Yes.
I believe that was five to one, with Ms. Parker being the no on that vote.
Okay, so those are all together, got it?
Yes. Since both waivers relate to the maps themselves.
Gotcha. And who were the two noes on the special, the second special permit?
That was Ms. Parker and Mr. Marshall.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure I heard correctly, it was breaking off a little.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody.
So, well, you voted, but you haven't actually voted a decision, Tim. So everyone voted the ups or downs, but?
Well, the special, one of the special permits was denied, was not approved by a supermajority, so.
So do you want to just have the board authorize you to work with Paul? You still have to file a decision to, to put a decision together, how does the board want to proceed?
Yes. My assumption would be is that we would work with Paul to put together a draft decision for the board to review.
Okay, so you're going to come back and review it in a meeting?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
Yes.
And I don't know whether the, I can't ask the applicant this question, because we closed the public hearing.
What's the question?
I want to know if this was developed as retail, as commercial, not necessarily retail, commercial as originally planned.
Okay.
Would we still have rendered impervious more than 15% or 2,500 square feet of the lot?
My assumption would be yes, based on parking requirements.
Okay, I'm going to change my vote then.
Because retail would be higher traffic and generally requires more parking per square foot. I can't do the math for you on that in terms of the lot size.
I do concur.
Well, when they originally came in a few years ago.
15% is really small.
Yeah.
And the original approval of Phase 1, there was well over 15,000 square feet within those three. All, all three buildings exceeded 2,500 square feet.
I would like to make a motion to revote the special permit with respect to the Water Resource Protection District.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to revote on the special permit related to the Water Resource Protection District. Motion, a second, is there further discussion on that motion from the board? Okay?
Yes.
And we'll go through everybody again, Rob?
No.
So, just to clarify, this is just on the motion to reconsider that you're voting now?
Just the motion to reconsider?
Yes.
The one reconsider that was.
So the motion is to reconsider?
Okay.
And then we would revote?
Okay, I clarified.
Town meeting rules, yes.
Thank you.
So, just to be clear, I'll start again, Rob?
Yes.
Steve? Eric?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the motion to reconsider that vote was approved 6-0. Making you work for it, Paul. Do we have a follow-up motion? So we'd like to vote to reconsider the Water Resource Protection District's special permit decision, or not decision, vote.
So it'd be the same motion as the present?
Any further discussion before I go through the roll? Okay. Rob?
Yes.
Steve?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. So upon a revote that has passed 5, 1, 0. So. That vote has passed, so we will work, I think it still probably makes sense for Paul just to finalize the decision, and we can review it in our next session and make sure that all of the conditions are buttoned up and that everything is aligned. Okay? Is there any further action anybody would like to take in relation to this application? Okay. Thank you very much, everybody, and we'll continue on with the rest of our agenda. As I mentioned.
Don't think you need me for anything else, so I'll sign off for the night?
Thank you.
I don't think so, Robin, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Night.
You too.
Okay. As mentioned previously, the next two items on our agenda, we are looking to continue for our November 12th meeting because of noticing questions. So I look for a motion for that, for the next one, which is 222 Mansfield Avenue.
Motion to continue MSP 4 to November 12, 2024.
Seconded.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. And the next one is site plan SPR-8 and special permit SP-13 for 257 Mansfield Avenue.
Motion to continue site plan SPR-8 and special permit SP-13 to November 12.
Seconded.
Thank you, Eric and Laura, the motion and the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So, the next step, the last item on our agenda this evening is a discussion about our community engagement strategy as it relates to the continuing discussion about the MVA communities bylaw. Paul, I'll turn it over to you in terms of what you shared prior to the meeting. Obviously, for anybody who wasn't at town, wasn't at town meeting, the articles relating to the communities bylaw were tabled to a future session. So whether they come back at the Spring Town Meeting or whether they come back as part of a special town meeting is still to be determined. But, Paul, thank you for sharing. I'm not sure if you wanted just to walk through kind of a proposed game plan timeline for how we approach this in terms of community engagement and noticing and all of that to make sure that when we come through this process again, that we do get the feedback from members of the community that we need.
Okay, and, so this is a, it's, it's a conceptual game, well, I shouldn't say conceptual, but it's a game plan, work in progress, and I wanted to bet it through you all and see, am I in the ballpark, are there tweaks to be made? This is just one approach to try to deal with this, because at the, you know, the, as Tim mentioned, this was tabled, which, I should say a couple of things. Immediately after the vote or the next day, I reached out to the Executive Office in Housing and Livable Communities and told them that, and Town Council reached out to the Attorney General's Office. We haven't heard anything back from them, but they are notified that we're, we're tabling it, and that what we heard that night was, let's try to bring it back. But, in addition, when, when the time comes, I'll mention too, I had a meeting last week with an organization called Mass, Massachusetts Housing Partnership, Mass Housing Partnership, that funded Serpents' work. They're considering a request for additional funds to help Serpent come along, but. So what I tried to do after the meeting is figure out first a timeframe of when we could do this, and as Tim mentioned, it's potentially, it's probably very doable if, if things go forward to get it at a Spring Town Meeting, potentially a special early enough, but.
And there's the potential that there may be a special related to other items, so.
Right, and then there may be one later this year, but I'm, unless someone has a different approach, this isn't going to get us there before the end of the year. I just felt that after what was said, that having a community engagement session was a real important step. And with the holidays upon us, that's going to limit the window of, of when we can do it, but we should try to do it before the end of the year. And so, thinking about in terms of the holidays, we could have an event between mid-November to mid-December, but I, I wouldn't go beyond December 12th, because then you're, you're getting into the holidays, people have events, and it's just not a good time to do community engagement at that time. And of course, we wouldn't do it the week of Thanksgiving. Of course not, because I won't be here either. So, but, so, so then, we would have a community event, which I'll go into more detail in a little bit. But after those event, after that event, you would be then working off of the feedback we received from the public, looking at that, and then honing in on the specific areas and parcels, and then also honing in and revising the language. And you recall from the, from the amendment made on the floor, it was focused primarily on dimensional requirements and density bonuses, and we would need to look at that. As the chair had actually asked representatives of Select Board and Finance Committee to start to join us, Select Board was looking at it last week. There was one person interested in doing it, but they, they had only three members, so they've decided to wait another meeting. And I've reached out to the Chair of the Finance Committee to get a representative there. So hopefully soon enough, they will be appointed to it and working with you all.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
A joint meeting at some point?
Okay.
If they want to have all this input, why are we even there? Trying to just have one of them come each forward. Maybe for the first one, fine. I think there should be a joint meeting before a town meeting.
Yeah. And I presented.
Before they vote.
I presented, I presented to both of them prior to this town meeting and went through everything.
Yeah, but it's different than a joint meeting.
And the feedback was kind of, yeah, we've watched all these meetings, but we haven't said anything. So rather than.
Let's get it all in on the table from everybody.
The initial approach was, get somebody from these boards at one of our meetings, rather than let's set up a whole new thing. If we want to do a joint, big joint meeting, we can definitely choose to do that.
I think that happens after we go through the process, or that is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Before we vote on something to submit.
And just adding to that, I think, you know, this isn't the first time the Planning Board has made a recommendation at town meeting, and one or both of those boards have had a different, you know, had it, denied it.
Monday morning quarterbacking?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not editor- No, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not editorializing it. I, I just think that it's important going forward that when this board is proactive and, and, you know, leading in effort, that we get those other boards who make recommendations to town meeting, if they're able to. I think it would just be beneficial to everybody.
And get everyone here in person?
Yeah.
On the record.
Yeah, it's, it's a different, it's a, it's a different... You know, when you're presenting it versus developing it, it's just a very different thing. And if you're hearing it for the first time, you all had the benefit of working on it for almost a year. We throw this out at them one meeting, and it's tough. It's, it's, it's tough on, on everybody. So I think, I, I like that. I think that would be a worthwhile approach. We'll see if we can make it happen, but I made that note, because then, yeah, after-
I honestly think that should happen pretty early on in the process, because I, I wouldn't want one representative from a board pushing us in a direction one way, and then the rest of their board has a disagreement with it later on. I know the select board was kind of divided. I think FinCom was a little bit divided on something like-
They both were.
There's members in there that have differing opinions. So I'd like to get all the opinions on board, if prior to just one main representative. And that's also part of this. By selecting a representative, they're asking somebody to A, speak for them, and B, we're talking about this community event. They have now seen it more than once. If they have feedback, they know where to find us. There is no, from my opinion, there is no excuse at this point to not share their feedback.
Did you feel they didn't give us feedback?
Yes, yes, I did.
I actually felt like they did. I encompass, I have some, I'm gonna show a little bit that kind of took it-
I think that they gave no feedback prior to us noticing the parcels, which put us in a position to proceed with those parcels or do nothing, so.
I agree.
As I've, yeah.
So, and the goal would be, once we get feedback, inputs from the public, then, and focusing on an area or areas, like, just like what you did before. You focus on the areas first, and then you crafted the, the, the language with that area in mind. So, so my thought is with the open house, it would be an open house. It would be really a working group exercise where their primary focus is to identify areas to locate the district, and-
And a lot of those, I think, Rob has suggested, made suggestions. We know we had other members of different committees made suggestions. All of those are on the list for review already. This is-
Okay, well, mine's a little different from that.
But-
So, again, I'm just throwing out something, and you all direct me to what we're going to end up doing. I've done these exercises before, and, and I think we've had good luck in the past in other places I've been, but ultimately, this would be a dot, a dot voting exercise. And again, this is just still in the working process. But what I would envision is a person comes in, we give, do a brief introduction. Don't know all the details of it yet, but here are the instructions, but person gets three dots. And they can put the dots on them, on a working map, however they want. They want to put one in three different areas, they want to put all three in one. But I would also advise that we use maps to help give them the context. So we already have the maps from, from Serpents', the, the site suitability maps, but I would also add things like, uh, the zoning map, put in an aerial, uh, we would bring our laptops, so we, we have the assessor map, so people can look at information to help inform them where they would like to see this district. In addition, um, and I didn't spell this out well on here, and I've done a little more research. In addition to the map, we should also have poster boards for people to put on their thoughts that really aren't mappable, but also find out more things like, where did you put your, you know, where would you like to see the district and why? Because a dot mapping is, is good, because it'll, it's very transparent. Usually when you do dot maps, you usually set, see trends. You usually see a handful of areas where there's a lot of interest. And that'll be helpful, because when we have our meetings after that, we'll work off of that map, so you all can see, okay, it's, it's really, people have interest here, here. Or, or it's, it's, you get a lot of responses to the person who writes, "I don't want this anywhere." But the point is, you don't censor them. You, you, you let everyone, and that's, you know, part of what the, the, uh, poster boards would be, is they could say something like that, and then you could check it if you agree with that statement. But, but the, while the dot voting exercise is good, we, we need to do a comment board to dig a little deeper, to find out more of the why, why this area, you know, that sort of thing. And so at the end, we can see what's, you know, the people who've attended, where are they seeing it? And it really comes from them. Uh, I think this is, you know, with, you know, again, I think having those maps, the suitability maps and other things, the zoning map and so forth, I think will help people get a context. Plus, people know the town, and we got to trust them. And so I think, after we have that map, and, and by the way, everyone's invited, right? Everything, so everyone has a chance to put their dots where they want to. And, you know, you might see that people go, sure.
I have a good question about the, so when we present this, so when we go through the map, I don't recall specifically on the push and pulls, was the level of single-family home of butters in the push category, was that marked by Serpents?
No.
That is critical.
That's super critical.
For people coming and putting dots on a map to understand that, and nobody but a planning board member is going to understand the pushback we are going to get if we propose putting this next to a, a huge single-family area. So that needs to be raised loud and clear.
It's an engagement data point.
Yeah.
It's not a binding recommendation.
I, I get it, but if all, if we wind up with the majority of dots, and let's say, you know, for example, you know, it winds up on a-
Dean Street.
Where?
Dean Street.
I'm thinking of something more densely, something in R forty. I know it's not going to happen in R forty, but something where it's more densely populated with a very high concentration of single-family residents who, reservoir. Let's, let's put it on zero Mansfield Ave. That wins the most dots. They need to understand, people need to understand the ramifications of, it could potentially get shot down at town meeting because the residents rise up against it. And that is very likely.
Yes. Again, I, I guess that this is, this is-
And unless you're a planning board member-
This is a potential outcome that people would-
You don't know the vitriol until you try and put a duplex next to a single-family home.
Yeah, I, I, I would just say a, a couple of things there that, um, we would have to during a brief intro, and then I think it would be great for, you know, for the board, for some of the board members and myself to be floating around there answering people's questions. But I think a point would be is, where do you think multifamily is most appropriate? And bear in mind that it's not a special permit. I mean, you know, we wouldn't say it like that, but where are those areas? And I, I, I hear what you're saying about this being like a budding that... I, I guess at that point, if, if, if zero Mansfield is, gets a lot of votes, that's going to be a deter, decision that you all are going to have to go, try to go forward with, or not. You, you, you know, you, you're independent here.
Right.
But I think it's, it will be important for people to weigh in and see it. I mean, the thing that's going to happen too is, everybody's going to see it.
Yeah.
And if they see it, you might get people going, hey, I live in this neighborhood, I'm concerned about that.
So the other aspect that needs to be considered is, there are people who are pushing for us to put it in an area that does not presently have sewer, which I understand on its face, and from a hundred-foot distance, yes, that seems to make sense. Let the developer bring in sewer. Until we wind up with an Elm Street situation where they're allowed to come in by right, put in sewer, ha, we've got no leverage over them to defray the cost of signing up or connecting all of those houses along the sewer line that they're installing. So that's another aspect that needs to be considered, is if they're pushing for a place where there's no sewer, they need to understand they, they risk the wrath of the residents who are along that line, who are now going to be forced to connect, and we have no leverage to bargain for an applicant to pay for it.
Unless it's a private line, right, so...
Yeah, but if an applicant was putting it in, they wouldn't be forced to connect.
But I hear what you're saying. That might cause a decision by the town.
But if it's down in Elm Street?
Yeah?
They're not forced to connect unless your system fails. Same thing that went through with zero reservoir.
Yeah, that, that's-
But that's-
That's in the, um, bylaw, not zoning, but-
Yeah.
A private line is, like Alan said, it's going to make you fail.
Ultimately, if we are going to get community feedback in one way or another about where people think we should cite this district, we are going to get feedback that runs the gamut-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of good idea, bad idea, and all those ideas will be subjective to each everybody.
Right, and then we're going to wind up going in front of FinCom, who are, like Elm Street, are going to reject it because they don't want to force residents to have to connect.
It, it's, so one of the things, as what I think will be positive will be, when, when we, when people arrive, we want to get their email addresses, because we want them to come to these meetings. Because again, it, it's really asking them, show us the area. If you have a parcel in mind, that's okay, but work with the planning board later to work on the parcels. Because if they start going into parcels, that'll, that'll just get haywire real, real quickly. But if they just identify an area, they, they can do it. And then, then the details works, comes, comes back, the details get figured out at your meetings. But I think if they give you a clear enough area, then that's a, that's a pretty big, or areas.
I was gonna say, that was one of my questions here, because, you know, you remember the feedback from the school board?
Yeah, yeah, about the, the impact of Solmane's, yep.
Yeah, and, um, so to accommodate that, this plan did strike me like it was looking for just one area. Like, let's find a place to put it.
Mine?
Yeah, the, the thing with the community voting. If I read it wrong, I'm mistaken.
No, no, it, it's, it's, that's why I said they could put it on multiple areas.
Okay.
Just to make it-
No, no, I, I, right, just to put multiple areas, not one. But at the end of the day, I hope we see two or three areas with a lot of dots. We can go, okay. It'll be a lot more challenging if the dots are dispersed everywhere. But I agree, right, the school board, if, for those of you who didn't hear, we're concerned that with, with the proposal on TPC was the impacts to schools, particularly Solmane's, because that's what that, Sol, uh, uh, that area is zoned for, Solmane's.
Why are we not allowed to take into schools into our decision-making? So why should we take it into our decision-making now?
Well, he's, it's just-
I, I know your point.
Yeah. No, no, I, it's, it's true of any infrastructure.
On which elementary school would they prefer the exact?
Exactly. Which, we want to go to LG, which is smaller.
Well-
Or the Yell, which is ancient.
Well, they all been-
The actual ask-
Yeah.
Yeah.
The actual ask wasn't to pick a school. They wanted us to split it up. They actually all ate of my, they, they did not like any of my eight suggestions, or your suggestion either. All of them, the same reason they were contiguous. And they want to split it up and dot it in different corners of town, so that it, they, if this does get built, and one of the proposals I'm going to have could allow it, it could get built, I'm not doing one of those estate things. And, um, you know, it, it's got to be spread around town. The idea is then, if it does get built, the kids are spread out over schools. It doesn't put all the burden on one school. That was what they raised.
One thing that needs to be, if we were going to have a debate about where the kids go and how we split the parcels, what is the actual capacity of the schools? Because is the Solmane's twice the capacity?
They have seventy-seven budget. Let them figure that out, then.
Yeah.
I think they can also redraw those lines too.
Probably three times the size of the Yell, of the North School.
Anyway, there's never going to be a perfect area. Something's going to have-
Fairy tale apartment buildings we're worried about the impact on schools.
The, the J.C. Solmane's right now takes the entire R forty district, which is zoned for multi-band made by special permit, right, right now.
And the, the challenge with projecting school enrollment is, it, it's a moving target.
And don't we have school choice? Can't, can't we just redirect them to a different school?
It, I, it's, I can't, I can't answer that.
Why do they all have to go to that one school?
We're just, Rob's just bringing up a point that a, a couple of members made, that they would like to see it, the, the district-
Yeah.
In different parts of town. That's, that's all.
And that's something that, when we come back with, whatever we come back with, something that we can explore, is the regulations allow for a certain amount of it has to be contiguous, and the rest can be of these size, spread around. So we can evaluate that in, to use that or not use it, however it makes sense for the areas we choose to look in.
I always feel like we need to come up with a weighting system for the criteria.
Well, you did. I mean, they, I-
But in terms of like-
The su, the suitability analysis was waiting.
Yeah, the, the school's, you know, desire to split it up into three parcels is, is-
Yeah.
Yeah. How does that weight against sewer, for example?
Low.
Yeah, in my opinion, low.
I'd like clarification about what the school can do to fix that issue. If they can change the district, or if they can just tell the, us to pick up students, go there.
Right.
I, the, I think if we're looking for a solution that makes everybody at town meeting happy, then we'll be here, then we will be gray and-
Right, which is why we need to prioritize the criteria.
I think there should be like-
It wasn't another forty town government.
So, okay, Laura, that's a, that's an interesting point.
Yeah.
So maybe that's something we work on, is what, what additional criteria should this board, and we'll say planning board plus with the other reps, look at, that we didn't look at before? But like Tim said, no place is going to be perfect. They're all gonna have-
Can I suggest that prioritize the criteria? While I think that's a wonderful idea, you're just giving them another thing that everybody can have a divided opinion on?
Whether we use the great criteria.
Yeah.
Oh, fair enough.
I never mind it all over the place, just saying.
That's a valid-
There is-
But I, I actually think prioritizing is a good idea, but it just, I, I know this public, we will run into that.
We're going to have to share our criteria anyway.
There's got to be some-
Oh, we have to share.
Major ideas that we can push and pull from. Like, i, is it a main road, or is it a back road? Do we want the housing on back roads or a main road? I think we can make a pretty clear decision about that for the most part. We don't really want to tuck it down to dead end.
Yeah.
Like that kind of stuff.
At some point, I actually have a-
Closest to retail?
So-
So I, I don't really have anything more to add.
From a path forward here, broad strokes, this is the community input event plan that Paul is proposing. So, in terms of, if we wanted to do something in mid-November to early-December, we probably want to give direction at this meeting about how we want to proceed as a board to Paul, so...
One more question. How can we reach out more? Can we use Norton Alerts? What else can we do to blast it out there? What do we do for VCC? That's my question. Like, how do we incentivize the voters to actually show up?
They did show up at Village Center for the-
Village Center, oh, I have decent turnout.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, of course, they were, they were, so, so, um, of course, once you get to that point of selecting parcels, then word comes out. Again, I mean, notices go out. This time around, before, for the event, um, you know, again, we haven't flushed this all out yet, but once we get a direction, then it's go time on my part. But I want to make sure, just even internally, I want to invite school board. I want to invite Warren Sewer Commission, invite them to it.
Where are you, where are you thinking about doing it, I guess is the next question. Where do you want to do it?
Crane.
Paul.
Crane.
Big room.
Don't let us use it?
I want to see it. I haven't seen the big room yet.
That's my, that's my last point for tonight.
Yes.
That's my last point.
I honestly like the idea of having all the town administration from different boards kind of get on and give some input as a group also, just aside from the residents. I, I'd like to get the town working together on this.
I mean, we can, we can say, if, we can, may give a direction that town staff, staff gets dots too. That's, that's a choice that we can make.
I, I think it's important.
Looking at their, at their purviews from whether the town manager, the accountant says-
Yeah, yes.
This parcel has more potential than this, let's not use it, let's put, this parcel is underutilized. So that's a, that's a, again, that's, so...
I do have one question here, because we would be doing all this. I see there's a bit of work involved and stuff that we have to get set up for and all that. And then I see you have Serpents' involved too, so, okay.
Yeah.
So where does, how does this all get paid for?
Great question. Thank you. Um, so I'm hoping Mass Housing Partnership pays for it. They couldn't promise it, because they actually gave us two grants with Serpents'. They couldn't promise it, because they actually gave us two grants with Serpents in the last two years. And they're working with a number of communities like us now, who are, they, they've compartmentalized those like us who tabled it, and, and those who, who dropped it. So, if not, I have a rough ballpark of what Serp- Serpents role will, will be focused on the compliance modeling and GIS work. They're not gonna handle, they might be able to assist with outreach, but that's, that's my shop. So, I have a small budget. Probably wouldn't be enough to pay for it, but I'll talk to the town manager to see, do we have any excess money? We're only talking in a ballpark of about five to ten thousand per Serpent.
Are we thinking about just printing out a few large maps of the town and just hanging them?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I think.
And we have those maps, I, I'll need, I'll need their, I'll, you know, I only have a, a snapshot of it. I'll need their files, their PDFs or JPEGs for it, but.
Can we reuse the master plans?
Well, I'm sorry.
Can we reuse the master plan ones?
Yeah, we can use, I mean, we'd have to figure out what from the master plan you'd like, the board would like.
I'm just thinking, you know, of those sessions where we did go, and I forget.
He's, he's looking for the maps from their three A presentation where they put the town in degree.
Sorry, got it.
I have a question here, because you were talking about putting, you know, maps on the wall, these dots, I assume these were electronically?
No, it's, it's old school. We don't have that capability, they were just beat dots.
Oh, there's time counting. I'm gonna be honest, it's actually better to have the people in person than do it, than do it electronically anyway.
Yeah.
It's much better as a community exercise, everybody can see what's going on.
Yeah, and I know everyone can see where people have put dots, they can start talking to each other, you know, why they're.
They can see someone else putting a dot on the page.
Yeah.
And not sit at home themselves trying to think about it.
Well, we want people talking.
Doing it, yeah.
We want people talking and, and, you know, they might say, well, you know, again, I think we would have value as, you know, be able to answer questions that they'll have about it, and so, yeah. So, we'd just be putting dots on a.
Let me consider something here though, this is, I thought, pretty involved, you know, getting the, and all that. As far as getting feedback, was there a problem that we just didn't reach out to the community and get feedback, or is it because that we ignored feedback that we received?
Oh, God, we didn't do that, no.
I think we did.
No, well, okay, so, so, we did, so, when the, the parcels were selected, we, in addition to doing the usual of butter notices, so we notified the property owners and then property owners within three hundred feet, which, you know, we did that, but prior to that, I actually, I sent a, a letter to the property owners to let them know this was coming. Just said, if you have any questions, let me know. I never heard, well, I heard, I heard from that one gentleman who spoke. And then I also met with a few, I met with, at the time, so I met with TPC, they didn't have. Okay, this isn't, this doesn't affect us, and I also met New England Ice Cream, they had questions, but then they said, well, this doesn't affect us. You know, they're planning on doing an expansion, which you'll be seeing soon, not, not the one you're seeing in two weeks, but later on. So, we did a little bit more than usual, and we didn't hear anything, not from those folks that we targeted.
This was actually a butters, but it's not, you're saying let's get the whole town's feedback though.
Right, because this was, this was a butters for your public hearing, so we're, we were, but this is a different event. This is, this is a community engagement event, it's, you don't, you won't even be calling a meeting to order. They're gonna come in and it's, it's an open house.
On that note, if we're all there, how is that not a meeting?
Well, well, we can put it, we can put together an agenda that could, that says that you might have a quorum, but no action will be taken. So, we, we can get that covered, just like what we're doing for Bobrovsky's work, it's the same thing, we'll have to do it for all the boards. So, you can do it, you can do it, and so, but, so this is a different thing than the, than the, than when we noticed for the public hearing.
Let me quantify why I said I don't think we listen to feedback. As far as what went on last fall, I can't speak to that about one way or another, because I just thought it wasn't here, but since I've been here, I've watched this go before, boards who gave us feedback. The school board gave us feedback and all that, and I feel like we just ignored that and wound up at town meeting anyway.
So, it was after it was noticed?
None of that feedback came before we noticed the parcels, so it was past the point of no return.
Yeah, we.
So, you're saying you did not have the right to take that back and not put it into town meeting? That was not an option?
I could've sat there and done nothing and let it be not moved. As I expressed in the meeting, I did not feel that was the appropriate course.
So, once we hit a certain point, the date, we had no, we couldn't switch. We couldn't, we couldn't pick new parcels beyond a certain point.
No, we couldn't pick new parcels, but I felt like we should not have gone forward to town meeting with that after two boards did. You're going, oh, they were, they did vote not to support it, and.
They did, they didn't have enough votes to support it.
The school board wasn't voting, but they were on there objecting a lot, they objected all eight of my ideas too. You know, and I, I guess I do try and listen to them too.
Well, this will be an opportunity, and again, if this, if, if we wanna do more, again, I would say, yeah, I, I, I try to keep it simple. And I would say, you know, I want them to come and participate, and then maybe there's opportunities for further collaboration. I mean, that's all, that's all up to you, but certainly for the boards that make a recommendation at town meeting, working more closely with them.
What are you thinking for like time and date that's gonna be around here? How many people are you gonna get? What are you thinking for time wise?
I, I would do it about six o'clock, but as an open house, I think the good thing is, people could, could just come in and dot vote and write on the boards and be done quickly, but.
So, you could do six to nine or something, give them a window so they don't have to be here to set time?
Right, yes, right, that's a big part of it.
With a meeting, you have to show up.
And, and I don't think the public's typically used to that here, because we haven't, we haven't typically, we did it with the master plan. But I think we could, I think we could have a large enough window, I'm not sure about three hours, because we're all there. But maybe if, if you all want that, we, we could. But I think giving people a chance to come in and, and we'll probably find that people are gonna wanna talk to each other about it, which is a good thing. And we would just say, look, if you guys have a good idea, write it down. The only thing that matters, the only input we'll capture is what you write down, put it in your words, just make sure it's legible. You know, we don't wanna transcript, you know, we, we don't wanna take notes from somebody saying, I want this, unless there's some impairment that we can, you know, we can help them out with, but, yeah.
Because I came in here tonight, and I, I still have it, I was gonna put up an option nine, and, you know, I went to a, where we cutted the school, you know, but they got shut down too. And it would be a far simpler thing for us to do, and I actually do think it would fly for people. And it's a good meeting in the middle, it even allows that the state is gonna get some work they want here.
So, it's a, you have a parcel, it's a parcel specific recommendation that you're looking at? Okay.
Yeah.
We can look at it, I think, and then after, I think, the board can make a decision about how we'd like to move forward in terms of.
Yeah.
The community engagement outside.
Give me a second, I gotta pull it up.
I, I wouldn't have a problem with the idea of, like, I mean, I've offered parcels, Rob's offered parcels, if anybody else wants to do so. I, I wouldn't mind the idea of.
Kevin O'Neil sent all parcels.
I wouldn't mind showing the ideas also that have been, you know, brainstormed at the meeting. Like, this is what I think are options, and if anybody agrees, go ahead and stick your sticker up there, but otherwise, pick something else, but, you know, it might not be bad to throw ideas on the table either.
My thought on all of this, and, and I think we, we could do something like that. I, I just want to give people more of a clean slate and have their own thought with it. But let me make a note, I'm gonna make a note about that.
You know, like Laura said a little earlier, like, we're all on the board, we pay attention to a lot of things, but most people don't pay attention to the zoning quite so much, or where single family homes are, or where the density is, and what specific rules.
If we have a zoning map there, that can.
It helps out a lot, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, we, that's easy enough to do.
Yeah.
I just need to think about that. I, I'd certainly want people to, who've given us their options to map it. I, what I just don't want is someone biased by it, I'm not, maybe not saying that correctly. I'd just rather see people come in and, you know, where would I like to see it? And, you know, but if they go, oh, so and so is suggesting that, maybe, you know, they know what they're doing, oh, and that, that may be fine.
Yeah.
I just.
Yeah, I think they need to see it in the context of kind of the, the serpent maps, where we have sewer, zoning, and the makeup of the butters. I think.
Makeup of the.
Meaning, are we.
Single family, multifamily.
The zoning map should pick that.
It doesn't show, it doesn't show what the house is.
Okay, so maybe, ah, if we have.
Really.
On the GIS, they have land use.
Yeah.
And that has a whole map with whether it's a single family, multifamily on it.
Know that now, because that gets into.
Yeah.
Other things.
I mean, you could just put the big GIS.
I wanna, I wanna second though what she's saying about paying attention to the abutters.
Yeah.
All eight of my suggestions, I actually drove to those places, drove around, looked at, you know, said, tried to visualize it, didn't just kinda like go around on a map.
I'm more concerned of a Bay Road situation.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
I think Bay Road's off the table already, in my, in my mind.
No.
We don't know where people will put it.
Right, but it's like. I was surprised that they didn't.
Already seen a road.
Joke at me about not changing parcels for a zoning article after I started talking. Because they feel that they were improperly noticed for a town meeting article five or six years back.
Well, it's worth, I completely understand why you didn't just change on the fly. Yeah, I, I.
For, for what it's worth, I think Tim presenting it at the town meeting, even though I didn't agree with it, is a good idea as far as presenting that the town was following through with the state mandate. And the town, I mean, he presented it and gave everybody the option, said, basically, feel free to not vote on this, we're just presenting it as, as an administration. Basically to stop us from getting sued.
Rob's got this thing up on the screen here, so I see.
Let me just get, yes.
Some of the parcels are the multifamilies that we looked at.
Yeah.
I see yellow and then I see.
Let me show where they, let, uh, first of all, this blue is something I looked at and passed on, and it's for the same reason. It's a good example of what Laura's talking about. This was one, I looked at it because it was brought up to us in the feedback, people said, why don't you put it over there? They're talking about the gym that's in trouble and the housing development behind them.
Unpleasant.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
And if you look right behind them, there's actually, they're upscale homes too, and I can promise you that wouldn't go over well. You know, this is what I mean, I went and drove around, said, no, we shouldn't put it here. So, that's, the blue is a spot, just to show I did do some look into it, since so many people were recommending it to us, and did not personally feel it was a good choice.
Just, can, can I just, I don't know about add to it, but in that area, I'm fairly certain Attleboro has sewer pretty close to our town line, you know, the, the new subdivision.
Yeah.
My understanding that's on sewer, not sure that's a good or bad thing for the town.
Going across from the post office, you mean?
Right, but I, I, I can get that confirmed where that is, but.
On that area though.
Just over, past the Dunkin' Donuts, there's that subdivision.
That came out of nowhere like three years ago.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, I believe that's sewered.
I'm, I'm friends with one of the butters to that subdivision, it was very disappointed that their conservation land that they were surrounded by turned into that.
Paul, it seems like we're leaning towards having community engagement.
Let's, hold on, let's, we have this thing in front of us, let's go look at the three in front of us, and focus on one thing at a time.
This is the one thing at a time, because is that, isn't that our next step, is to say, what is our next step? Sounds like we are going towards community engagement, right, in, in the form we're talking about, or am I incorrect?
I think that we are, I think, but the tribes get too much light here.
I don't wanna talk about details at the, at this very moment. My question to you, Paul, is how much time would we need to set something like that up?
I'm gonna have to dedicate a lot of time to it, because I think it, it's, especially if we, we need to do it before the end of the year. Because, you know, time, you know how with town, town meeting, our, our time collapses in order to get everything done in time, right, so, it'll be done.
In my work, from my work perspective.
Yeah.
I have about four weeks' worth of quality time left, with me and my team. Well, that's why I'm asking you, like, if, like, let's say we're like, yes, we definitely wanna do this, we don't have all the details, but we definitely wanna do this. What's the earliest you think we could actually make it happen?
I'm, I'm thinking early December.
Early December, okay.
And if people wanna volunteer to help.
Feel free to reach out to me, I mean, you know.
Yeah, because one of the things I, I do wanna do, when, because we're gonna have to really get the map, the mapping sequencing right. I wanna do a test run with staff, nobody who knows anything about planning, because if they can do it.
So, the entire town.
Well, but, you know, I, I don't wanna have, you know, Nick working, the building commissioner, working on it, because he, he gets it. I, I wanna make sure that someone who has nothing to do with planning can look at the instructions, look at the map and go, oh, I get it. Or, I'm not getting this, all right, there's a bug, we'll fix it.
Yeah. That's Bill Gervais, he said he doesn't know zoning.
I want him to show up, I want him there, I want other people who have.
Go over Rob's map, if somebody that's made maps, I get frustrated, people don't look at them.
Well, it's just fine, it's like, we'll go, but I bet you I'm gonna lose presentation, yeah.
So, I see the, yeah.
The three areas I took, and I'm gonna expand on, you know, I, I zoom in on them in, in the next slide. I went through, this is after the school board said, you know, we didn't like your eight, because they were all contiguous. I think I remember some of my eights, there were some areas where it's like, ha, that'll never get built, and I disqualified all of those. Because trying to do Norton first, and that was how I was thinking, it was still, that doesn't mean we can't think about the state's needs second. Just Norton's have to come first, in other words, a difference between the people who are going around, forget the way it played, they're all go to the state, and I don't think that's the approach we should take either. So, I looked at which ones was it really not a bad deal for Norton if it actually got done, if the state got their way on those lots. And the strip along one forty, that's all multifamily apartments already. And so that's why I highlighted that, and that covers them. If those buildings got tore down and they put up new buildings of the sort they're talking about, there'd be a little more density. So, the financial thing comes in a little bit, but not as much. And though, that is not a bad deal along that stretch, especially with the first floor commercial. This next one, and going over to the right side of the map, little arrowhead shaped thing, that's the Glen. And again, the Glen, and if you know anybody that's been there, they've been in those buildings, they're not in good shape. If somebody came in and took that down and put up all new buildings, I mean, that's essentially, no disrespect to people who live, that's essentially a low income housing project already. Replacing their old buildings with new buildings would not be a bad thing for a lot of people, and it does it.
And they, they may not be able to afford the new buildings, but that's a secondary question.
Whoa. This is supposed to be low income housing. Yeah, I know, there's some double talk there, but I'll go with their story.
Yeah.
And then the third one, the tiny one down there, it's a lesser corner, it's really down where the host, was it the residence, whatever it's called.
Extended.
The migrant facility, whatever, yeah. And I'll, I'll zoom in, but you see where that's located, why don't I just zoom in, because it's easier to speak to, so going to the next one.
Isn't that in the industrial park?
Yes, it is.
It is, well, it's off to one side of it, but yes.
Why would we ever wanna convert?
Let me talk. So, let me go, again, you see the first one here is this line here, apartments. And you see the Glen's the one on the left, the middle one is right there, why would we want to? Because this is, the type of people that live in here, in these things, will be warehouse workers, drivers, a lot of that type of thing. And there are tons of jobs, if you just, you know, if I were to take my cursor and just go that way, we all know it's that direction.
Right, but we're giving up prime industrial land, which will bring in a ton more revenue as industrial than residential.
Well, I didn't feel like where the host hotel sits was anything we were making a lot of money off of.
Right, but if they decide to sell, and they sell it to a developer, and then it becomes residential, it makes buckest.
Okay. There's gonna be many opportunities to talk through this.
Yeah.
We don't need to pick apart any specific thing.
Well, no, I, I actually, I welcome feedback, so actually, thank you, for what it's worth, I, I actually wanna hear things like that. I will consider what you're saying there, because we do net, this is the net versus gross, we do net more taxes on industrial land. Glad we're recognizing that. The one up here though, we would just be replacing multifamily with multifamily. The one up here though, we would just be replacing multifamily with multifamily, and here, multifamily with multifamily. Um, this one here, right now, it is really residential, I mean, that hotel is basically a residence. And so it's gonna be to try and put more there, and the proximity of the jobs, I thought was a, a bit of a thing there. But let, let's assume, you know, the whole, I'm talking, let's assume these are all decent, hardworking people, you know, where, I hear all the things on character, but let's just assume they're all decent, hardworking people that wanna, you know, they'll get, take a job and do it all. This gives them away, I mean, that's walking distance and stuff, there's a lot of places in there that hire that.
Although I, I respect the idea, but I, I would imagine most of the people that live there, if it was multifamily, probably don't work in our own industrial park. Just because most people that work in town travel in general.
Fair enough. I did have other, these I thought were the top three, I could easily come back with more, cause I've done a lot of research on this the last month or two.
What does the wetlands look like on the industrial side?
Um, they're okay here. They're, they're over here, the reason I cut that off and didn't go down the corner is because that does become wetlands. Um, I checked this land out, and you're okay. If we needed to, at a couple spots, you could move that line out a little bit like that, easily, cause we already covered that we can do that.
I, I get wanting to replace the extended stay, just because of, you know, how it's been over the years, the problems it's had. But I, the industrial park, it, no housing's ever allowed in the industrial park, it, it's, it is somewhat out of place, I don't think everybody would work there, but I, I, I appreciate the idea of it, I mean, it's.
No, fair enough, and.
But we also do, we get a special tax off, off of, um, hotels and bunkedels also. services. We do get an extra tax revenue from that too, sort of like the marijuana liquor type thing.
Okay.
On slide three, is that other parcels? Rob on the third one?
Um, slide three is the Glen.
No, the, the next page, sorry.
Oh, these are parcels I, I passed on. Um, I had this ready in case somebody said, what, how, what about? And one of them is the, i- if you, if I zoom in on it, I don't think I can. See if I do it this way. This is what I was talking about, see all this right back here? This is the gym, and actually, I drew the map this way, cause I wanted to highlight the trouble. And this was the area right here where I'm circling, which we got a lot of recommendations, and we were getting them right in the town meeting, people were asking why we didn't think about over here. What I have circled here in red is why I passed on that, that is our single family homes right there.
Okay, this is why you wouldn't include.
Yeah, th- th- these were ones I admitted for concerns. I just threw them on a slide because I thought people would, you know, somebody might say, what about? And there was a lot of what about that one I just showed. And that's why I was gonna show why not, is because there's that whole group of upscale home, you'd be putting it right up against tha- that. And then the other one I thought we shouldn't count, that's the, our favorite property on Elm Street. Okay. I didn't like the idea of including that in the map at all. I'm not even sure we need to shove back on this because of the status of land.
Well, I don't think the fact that it's a brownfield would, would, that's come up, but I don't think that would be a, a reason not to, but I've just felt like this sits in the middle of a neighborhood, and this district has to allow multifamily by right. And this seems like a pretty sensitive area to give up your special permit authority.
I, yeah, I had a different concern with it anyways, and, yeah, we don't need to argue this, cause I had already admit it, omitted it anyways. Um, I was worried about the land, but, um, I was.
I don't see Elm Street developing much further anyways.
I, I don't, yeah.
Beyond that parcel.
The reason that got suggested a lot, a lot of people like, oh yeah, let someone build there. Again, people are trying to put it somewhere where they just think it isn't gonna get built, cause a lot of people believe Elm Street just will never get built.
Or it will get built, why not put it there, but I would, I'm like, well, certainly, and I'm not a voting member, but people have to understand, there's no special permit here, it's, site plan approval is a discretion, non-discretionary approval.
But we don't have to go on about these, because like I said, I'd already rejected them, and I could tell you guys are like, yeah, rejected, so.
No.
We're on an agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think what you presented is pretty good.
Um, I still think we should consider the, the one on the far right and the far left, where we're building over that, because there is some benefit there. And, um, you notice, I am not trying to, this is why I didn't do the Red Mill Village, remember that one, I was like, that'll just never get built. Yeah.
It's, yeah, I'm not sure if the, I hadn't, we hadn't done the due diligence, whether the, um, whether there's a deed, whether there's a deed restriction on that from the age restriction or not, but we'd have to get through that.
We could, I just don't, I, I also didn't wanna approach this in a spirit of screw the state, you know, trying to just pick something that just, we knew flat wouldn't work for them. Um, I was trying to find areas where they actually could get their way a little bit, without it being a hit to us. Quite so much.
Yeah.
And, and I think, still think these two areas do qualify, so with the Glen and the strip along one forty. If you don't like the one in the middle, we can certainly do that, I have, I, I think, yes, I have a bucket of research at home now. Uh, I could have easily swapped in something else there, and if, you know, and the reason I was suggesting this is because if we could come to an agreement on something like this, we can go forward, you, you know, you, some of you can make the end of the year, and this is a lot simpler, and I don't think you're gonna get pushed back from the town on what I've put here. I think that this would get voted through.
I think, yeah, I mean, ultimately, this board can decide, choose to do what it wants to do. If we wanted to try and do a push to get something done in the next eight weeks, that would mean basically I had, have the timelines in front of me, but choosing parcels and noticing at latest at our next meeting.
I wouldn't want to rush that.
Without kind of having that, some kind of a.
The thing is, I've done a ton of research, but you guys haven't had that chance, I'm just coming and telling you about it now, so.
No.
Yeah, to Steve's point, that's kinda rushing you off.
And I think.
I think we should all put ideas on the table and really think it out for this one.
I would not mind if more people would kinda do the type of investigation like I, I did, and see what other ideas could come out, there could be something I missed.
Yeah, and I think, I think, maybe this is me, cause I'm gonna be the one standing up at the podium here, I would like to, I think having a community feedback session, having this, we came to town meeting, this was tabled, this is what we did to get everybody's feedback, to bring what we have in front of you. Here are all of these things that we did. This is what we have.
Can I make a motion?
We heard your feedback, we listened, and this is what we presented.
I've got a motion to give Paul every ounce of authority he has, of money available, to go forward with the community session and get the ball rolling as soon as possible.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Can you allocate funds to me too?
How much you want?
Millions.
Done.
I'll, I'll hold for further discussion on the motion. So in terms of, the motion is basically to give Paul the green light on the community feedback as he outlined.
So what you're saying then is can any further of what I'm talking about, and just run with this idea?
It's not can, it, I, I mean, I, I think this is.
It's more involved than just you saying, we want these three parcels now.
I, I got a bunch of parcels to present, you got parcels to present, and everybody else needs the opportunity.
You're not kidding, your idea, it's a good idea. I agree with half of it.
Yeah, I think it's, honestly, it's not bad, and like the Glen proposal, the way we had it going, we were adding in retail into our thing, so if you over laid it on, on, if you laid it on the Glen, you'd be adding commercial uses too, and that's fantastic, that's great for our tax revenue.
You'd have a little bit of a village thing over here, and they are a little bit out on the outskirts, away from everything.
But I, I still think regardless of how good some of these are, and I agree with them, and this one, I, I advocated myself. We should still put them on the table and have a community outreach.
Cause I took your feedback, yeah.
Well, I appreciate, I mean, that's, that's the teamwork part, but I think we all, I think a community event and putting all out and taking our time with this is what is right for the town. I don't think we should rush into another meeting, we just got that one to have.
Okay. But I was, the reason I kinda jumped on that and said, well, let me try to come up with something from that feedback, was to take seriously your concern about doing it by the end of the year, and coming back with something we could possibly work with.
And I tried to moderate that a little bit at town meeting, kinda asked you, could fall, like, the real critical moment would be when the next grant timelines come around in Q two.
Yeah.
So, obviously, we're not the only town in this boat. We don't expect on January first, the state to show up with a wrecking ball at the town hall, metaphorically.
I, I, I did ask in my email to them, what, what happens next, what hap- cause we did get a grant, um, actually, um, to do design standards for this district. So there was another agency, again, notified a, a number of people, what happens to this grant? Do we lose it come January first? I, they, I think they're still trying to figure this stuff out. I haven't heard from them. Again, we did our due diligence to notify them where we're at, um, but.
Yeah, what happens with the Elm Street grant?
If we lose the grant, we lose the grant.
What happens with the Elm Street grant?
That stays.
Okay.
We have a commitment from the state that that's not touched by.
Same, same with Bobrowski.
Okay.
Bobrowski, yeah. Yeah, so no, those, that was, yeah, we, we had that answered a while ago, so the, the, the three and a half million is still, still good, but, um.
Do we have it in writing?
Um, we were on a Zoom call with them on it, and they said, no, we, I think we do, I think.
I, I'm thinking with Milton where, you know, they went full spite and
Yeah.
not only took things that, you know, were in the original houses.
But we're not there, they, they told us we're going forward, and we're going forward, and, and.
But to her point, a Zoom call, the call is not having.
No, I, I understand.
Yeah, so, um, yes, so, again, appreciate your, your fe- your feedback and inputs, Rob, and I think when we go through this community event and come on the other side of it, we may see people thinking the same thing as you. Or we come back and we say, this is what the town submitted, let's look at this, let's look at the ideas that you have, the ideas, any other ideas that we also have to bring to the table there.
I can't lie, I'm a little worried this is gonna. It's a lot of moving pieces.
It already did once.
Yeah, I know.
Well, but at least we're responding to some people who said we wanna weigh in on it. That's all, I mean, it, it, again, I, I'm not saying this is a guarantee.
That's a fair, that's a fair thing to.
Uh, I am not guaranteeing this is going to go off. The thing I, I just wanna make sure is people understand what they're doing, it's easy to do, and we'll see where people are at.
Yeah.
Let's face it, if we get twenty people to come out, we're doing good.
Yeah.
We can get more than twenty.
Let, let's hope so.
Working on it.
We have a motion in a second to, uh, tell Paul to go forward with the community event, as he's laid out and as we've given feedback to this evening.
Well, the thing is, we don't have the authority to allocate funds, oh, you just tell Paul to go forward, right?
Go forward with the budget that he has.
Cause the motion was.
Go brave and go forth, is basically what.
And the money isn't, Serpent's going to come in later, they'll have to do the compliance modeling once the parcels are selected, so we're, we're gonna have a little bit of time.
Yes.
Do we have to pay them too?
The, the printing, the poster printing is the, the Paul budget, the Serpent review of the compliance is the, looking for the grant, potentially, so, it's two different approaches.
Yeah, so we had that conversation last week, so they were all, so Serpent and Mass Housing were all on the same page, but she couldn't promise, but they're trying to figure out how they can work with all these communities, who are trying to get to the finish line.
Yeah.
Um, do we have to pay Serpent too?
Mm-hmm.
We do.
We need, we, I don't have the ability to do the compliance modeling. It's a number crunching.
I mean, I agree they've been helpful to us on, on a lot of things, you know, I've worked with the traffic committee, they've been a godsend over there, and all. But, you know, and maybe cause I work in the contract world and you take things individually, I felt like on this issue, they let us down. That I felt like they pushed us in a bad direction, the original plan coming through was seventeen fifty, all of that, they, you know, I, I felt like.
No one pushed me around, we made our own decisions around the issue.
Fair enough.
Eighteen months' worth of work.
And I think, I think that, there's, there's pieces, or I think there could have been better communication about different issues. And maybe we thought about it differently, or done something a little bit differently along the way. So, regardless of that.
I think we should consider.
There are regional planning agencies, I don't think we have like, there's not a second source for this.
No, they're the subject matter experts.
So, we can make sure that we
They're working with a lot of other towns.
Okay.
Ask, if we, we need to ask more questions, if we have concerns about what we're gonna present, I think that would be, yeah.
You think we can get one of them to come to our event?
Possible, if we, if we think we need them.
I, I, yeah.
I think we have the, I think we have the talent in-house with all of us to be able to.
I think we do, and I don't think we should be paying an outside agency, I think we're okay with making this decision.
I just, there are some things we, I just don't have the capability of.
For the community event.
Yeah, we can handle that, I mean, we'll need some, again, certain limited things from them on that, but, um.
I think they'll, I think they should be able to share an image file without too much trouble.
Yeah.
So we have, I'll go back, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Well, Paul, just for tonight, is there any other direction or information you need before we, we give the green light?
I think I'm good, I think the next step is really just building this, so. Anyone interested in that?
You're probably maybe anyway, so.
You can just go message, man.
Okay.
Just keep us up to date with emails, just send it to everyone, whoever can help, Troy.
Okay.
Okay, so, all in favor, and say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions?
No, I'll abstain, not say nay.
Abstain?
Yeah, cause I just, I don't like the idea, I'm sorry.
You don't like the idea of reaching out to the public?
Oh, don't say it that way, no, I don't like the idea of a big convol- I think this is way too fancy.
Well, we're gonna have to, I wanna avoid that.
I see too many ways of it, yeah, I see too many ways of it getting snarled.
No, understood.
That's, that's valid, and we're gonna do our best to, to land that plane and make sure it's straightforward, this guy.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, cause I explained originally that was my concern with it, that we're not anything else like, okay.
Okay, so.
Yeah, but no, I'm not saying shove it to the public.
No.
Okay, I just wanna be clear.
No, I understand. So, that runs through all the items we have posted. I do want to, as we said in our last meeting, do a reminder about social media and posting. From an open meeting law perspective, posting in a group where other members of the board are also members and will see it. If the group has a, if, the group that you're posting in will have a quorum of members who can see it. From a town council guidance perspective, it is the same thing as sending a mass email to all of us, even if nobody responds and nobody comments. So.
Really?
Yes.
Do we have a legal document that says that?
Yes, that is in the guidance that we shared at our last meeting, if you'd like a highlighted email for town council, I have that as well.
Okay, well, the guidance we got, this was for a different town, so I wasn't really sure how it applied.
It was from our town council as Evergreen guidance.
What's the meeting law applies to all towns?
If you, if you'd like, um, I have a, an email with highlighted sections from town council based on some of the recent posts that were shared. So, I will simply say, think about it when you post in groups about that. Sharing agendas, great. Sharing an event, great. Having a discussion about an item that's gonna be before the board, not great. Can I, yes.
Can we have a discussion about an item that has already been revealed to, to the public? Can we discuss something that is?
Yeah, cause you have a suggestion to it, I wanted to go.
Revealed in terms of, like, sharing the recording of a meeting?
If I mention something at a meeting, can I then write what I said at that meeting and the details, without asking for opinions or, or public, without asking for a vote on it?
We should be trying not to create forums where information is coming out that is not part of the meeting. So, what we, what happens in our meetings should be the totality of what we're considering for all the projects we consider. That's how I'm, that's how I'm looking at it.
For, for me, and I respect the idea of not trying to, like, the open meeting law, so nothing happens behind closed doors or in violation, whatever. But there, there is a bit of overreach in the sense of, like, I, I, I can speak my opinion about something.
Pre speech overreach?
Yeah, yeah, like, I can say what I want about something, if I'm not going behind somebody's back, if I'm not trying to make a deal. If I'm just speaking information, like, if, if somebody asks me a question about zoning, and I answer what the zone is, and we're still working on that project? Did I violate meeting law by defining what the zone is that that project's taking place in?
That's just answering a question, it wasn't a discussion.
Yeah, there's, there's eighteen layers of gray.
Inviting discussion is where it gets flagged.
Yeah.
Especially on an open, open project.
From, from the, the raw, like, basic level, like. From, from the, the raw, like, basic level, like, posting in a group where a quorum of members will see it is the same thing from an open meeting law perspective as sending an email to everybody.
And what about posting hypothetical scenarios? If I propose to the town, what if we?
You're inviting a discussion.
Well, if, if it's not a posted agenda item that you could just be talking about, what should I do with my shed?
Yeah, fine.
So there's.
If I said, how do people feel about having an industrial zone in, in, on Main Street?
That's fine.
It's not on our agenda. We're not working.
You want it to be on our agenda?
I'm just saying.
I'm trying to not, I'm trying to share the guidance from town council. I have two kids of my own, I don't want to be the parent of the board. So.
I don't want to break rules, but I want to, like, I'm social.
I shared the resources, Paul shared the resources in your last session. I have a secondary email from town council, which feels like a form letter reply. If you'd like to look at that, too. I was actually disappointed in the reply we got from town council, in terms of how generic their response was.
Because there's nothing they can hang their hat on. They're trying to business something when they don't have it.
No, so it's, we've all, I've shared the guidance. I think everybody knows that we probably have a quorum of members in Norton neighbors, we probably have a quorum of members that invest in Norton, whatever that group is called, and probably something else. If anybody's in the dad jokes group with me, then please don't post new planning stuff in there either.
The thing that took place, and I think you're referring to, is Steve posted one of his suggestions. I didn't have a problem with it, I liked the suggestion. I declined because of something you had said before, not to give him my feedback right then and there, you know, like, on the thing, so I didn't respond to it at all. But Steve simply said, hey, here's something I'm thinking of, what do you all think? And honestly, I don't see a problem with that.
And it was factual details, as.
Yeah, because all of us saw it and saw the discussion, that's where it gets.
But you would have that information, because that's just factual. If I say the R forty zone.
All discussions and deliberations need to take place in a posted meeting. That is open meeting law.
So.
But, again, it's a discussion on something that's, if, if I said, should we build an amusement park in town? I think it's a good idea. Why can't I say that?
It's like, what, what, we're in a hospital.
But, to that, I, we'll need clarification, but I know for certain, if, if that was in front of you, you should not be posting.
If it was in front of me.
I'm going to vote no on this, or I'm going to vote yes.
What's repercussions, what, what is the, what is the?
Right.
That's crossing the line.
What is the?
I don't know what the remedies are for if we break open meeting law. I would prefer not to find out specifically.
We're just trying to avoid all of that.
You get sanctioned by the state.
Yes, I would prefer not to do that, yes. So, so, we've shared it, I've shared it twice.
Yeah, I know.
I will say, please don't maybe share it a third time, and I'll be done.
I will do my best not to break any open meeting laws. I will not refrain from speaking.
No, I don't think we should break open meeting laws, I just, I really pity, I don't think you do. And I did refrain from having a conversation with him, putting back any of my feedback on it, because I was afraid you'd think that was a discussion and you might have been right on it.
Yes, so, if anybody would like to speak about it further.
Well, I'd like to.
Alan, thank you.
I'd like to let Steve present his idea here, if this is where he's supposed to be doing it.
I don't think that the zoning recodification was on the agenda, and we have the November thirteenth, right?
Yeah. This, this could either be for the zoning recodification, which is when I mentioned it, or it could be something we addressed separately, which was also said at the meeting that maybe this is not, the recodification was not the place for it.
Right, okay.
So if it's not part of the zoning recodification.
Yeah.
You know, I. Okay to discuss it?
We can. I don't, I would say personally, I don't think I'm mentally ready to discuss that point at this time.
I wasn't planning on bringing it up tonight, but, I mean, I, the idea was there, it's on the last meeting. Whoever wants to know it can watch our last meeting. Publicly available.
Okay.
Most of what I've been doing is holding, you know, both of my, all my decks have actually stayed with me until a time came to come in the meeting. So you guys first saw them first, but after that, I considered interrogate. Everybody can look at them. I just let you guys see them first.
Okay, understood. So we have a motion from Alan to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second from Eric. Is there any further discussion on the motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.